Okay, you did, okay.
Mr. Remann?
I told my lady today that I couldn't take it.
Where's this company at?
Chief Lynn.
At the town hall.
Did you thought you got hit out there?
Oh, my gosh.
We heard it all the way here.
Yeah, it was right next to it.
Yeah, that's why we opened the door, yeah.
That was crazy loud.
Yes, it was.
Wow.
Oh, when they hit the hydrant out there?
You heard it?
Yeah. Right, you heard it? You heard it, yeah. It was, it was pretty loud. I thought somebody done smashed into a car.
Is that close to my van? Or is it on the other roadside?
It was, it's right by the fire hydrant if you're by the fire hydrant. I don't know where you parked. But no, he didn't hit no vehicle, so you're good. It was the fire hydrant he hit on accident.
Don't worry about you. Haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah, I know. After me. Uh, no. I'll put on the yellow shirt.
That's another one of his buddies. You know who that is?
Scott Steiner. Scott Steiner, yeah. Wrestler.
Mick Foley.
Yeah. My son come and tramps and trees.
Sergeant Slaughter. Him and Scott were in the ring together. Wrestling.
Well, that's why I get nothing but every...
Pretty awesome. I said Wild Adventures.
Wow.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Between nine and five.
You remember the guy that used to go around with a lollipop in his mouth? Adam Rose? Degeneration X?
Lex Luger?
No. Yeah, like any...
And I gotta work more, so I gotta find somebody to stay over there. That's the hardest part. Make sure anybody's awake. Darling says she would, but I gotta call her about time they come.
Smitten all day, wait.
Seven o'clock, let the meeting come to order. Let's stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the Lord.
States of America, to the Republic which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty just for all. Amen.
How's it going, Mr. Fuller?
You got it?
Yeah, someone coming.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right, let's do roll call. Gail Lamb.
Gail Lamb, present.
Tom Severino.
Present.
Teresa Brinder, present. Zim Kajin.
Present.
Russell Meeks.
Yeah.
The first thing we have on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I got a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Unanimous? All right, now we move on to approve the bills. Do I hear a motion to approve the bills?
I'm making a motion to approve the bills.
Do I hear a second to approve the bills? All right, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, and then we have to approve the minutes. First, we have the minutes from August 8th meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for August 8th.
Do I have a second?
A second for the minutes on the August 8th meeting.
All in favor? Aye? All right, unanimous. And then we have the two sets of minutes from the 15th. We have the ones from the budget workshop.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from the August 15th meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second to approve the minutes for the budget workshop meeting? Second, all in favor? Aye? All right, unanimous. Then the last set of minutes is the August 15th special meeting minutes. Go ahead.
I'm making a motion to accept the August 15th meeting. Special meeting?
Yes.
Did I say it right?
Yes. I know there's so many minutes. All right, do I hear a second to approve those minutes from the August 15th special meeting? All right, all in favor? Aye? All right, unanimous? Okay, now we're gonna move on to public participation. If anybody has anything they would like to speak to the council about on the topic?
I'm gonna answer a couple of questions, but that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, as everybody know, I'm Darling Hudson. My daddy was the one that incorporated this place, made it a city. I hear this talk about wanting to come unincorporated. Why, what? I mean, what, what's, what would help? I mean, would we benefit from it or not? I mean, to remain a city, what's it gonna cost? I mean, I, I don't know, I wanna know. Why now do we wanna unincorporate? I mean, I don't understand. Well, I mean, I don't understand what's going on. Or why, or...
No one here is trying to incorporate.
No, okay. I hear it is.
Don had brought it up at the last meeting. And it's on social media.
It, it, it means it's on social media, and that's where it's coming from. You know, if you say anything, you know, then you're the bad person. Or if you do this and all that.
But Don did bring it up, so I think he would be the one to answer that question.
I mean, I, I mean, I think...
She just asked me the question. You don't wanna ask that question?
I mean, I'm just concerned, you know, why...
So how, how does she, how does she go about finding out what she wants to find out then?
How, yeah. I'm, I'm... Is that what, is that, I mean, I heard some of the council wanted to unincorporate. Is that true? I mean, how do y'all feel about that? I mean, is that what some of y'all are wanting to do? I mean, that's the talk around town.
That's what Jeremy wants to do.
Huh?
That's what Jeremy wants to do.
Nobody has put it out there that they want to do that. The conversation was brought up about it out of some frustrations the other night, I believe.
'Cause they say we're broke. The town's broke. And if we go broke, we've gotta turn over to the county.
But it is, it is, it is in me.
Okay.
And it's not broken.
Right.
And nobody has brought it out, that they're pushing for this and bringing it out. I think out of some frustrations the other night, it was brought up in the meeting between some, but it was not brought out as, as, that was the direction we needed to go.
Okay. Because, you know, I'm like mixed feelings, like, you know, my daddy, he's one to incorporate it. And I'd hate to see us go to unincorporate, you know, because of that, you know? And I've asked, I've asked people, and there's a lot of people says, no, they would hate to see us not be a city no more. I mean, the county don't wanna come in here and help us. Why? Does the county not wanna help us no more?
Well, it's not, no, it's not. The county's just, they're not wanting to help us, it's just...
Okay.
They're, they're making some stands about the rights and wrongs, about how things should be done.
Right.
And so they're putting us as responsible for the building and code enforcement. We'll talk about that later.
Which I understand all of that.
And the, and what's really good here is that you're getting mixed things out there on social media that's causing a lot of...
That's the reason I said I would ask you.
We actually brought that here to clear that up.
That's the reason I wanted to clear up here, you know? And let this be on social media, what I'm saying, you know?
That's right.
I'm not sure. It does, very much so. Okay.
Did your questions get answered?
Yeah, and they're not trying to do it, so...
I will say, if this board doesn't do the things necessary to run this town, how can we stay incorporated? That's a question I have.
Right.
Because I don't have people that wanna do certain things on this board. And if people just show up for a meeting and they're not doing anything outside of the meeting for this town, how can we run?
That's right.
So that's my question to the people.
I agree.
So one person can't run this town.
Right, I mean, I know there's things that we, we want for this town, city. And there's things that we, you know, I know, I know, we probably need a dog catcher. We need a, we, but we don't need that right now. Let's get ahead and get things that we really need. You know, I know there's people that got dogs running around, it's, you know, it's been that way for years. But things need to change. I agree. I do agree with that.
I think we have a board of all members who are engaged with going forward.
And that's what it's always been. People get on this board and they just argue, argue, argue.
Like it's, like nothing's getting accomplished, and it's a bunch of arguments, and people just wanna show up to collect their check once a month. I agree. That's what I see.
I do agree. I said this in my personal opinion.
This is my personal opinion of what I see.
And they just never wanted to listen to anything she had to say. Or thirty years, whatever. You know, and they always argue with her. But she knew, she knew her books. She knew what was right. Oh, they wanna get her off of there then, when she seen what was going on. So, um, all right.
What is it mean, what does it mean to unincorporate? What would happen to us as people if we unincorporate? I don't...
I know y'all said in the budget meeting about, um, taxes or whatever. Or either the water bill. My opinion is, so if the taxes go up, that's a one-time thing. Water bill's gonna be every month. And so they're gonna fuss about that.
The water bill's gonna continue every month. County's gonna take it over, and they're not gonna be as lenient about the price as it is here.
Right.
Taxes will go up, because now we would be going to the same taxes that they got Bronson and Chief Lynn and all the other municipalities in town. We're in those ranges.
Right.
You know, it's, you know, the town has sheltered the people from higher taxes for a long time. And it's gonna continue to do this. But it's gonna make sure that everyone pays their fair amount of taxes.
Right.
So that way, everyone pays the same amount that I pay on my house, that Don pays on his house. Everyone needs to pay the same amount.
That's right, the right thing needs to be done. I agree with that. I agree. You know, whether I, you know...
And that's gonna, that's gonna help the town drastically, and it's gonna keep, it's gonna, it's actually gonna shelter, keep everyone in the same shelter that the town has already been in the last time.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be more fairly balanced.
And that's the reason I know, that's the reason why people don't wanna clean up, do anything, because it puts, you know, and, and that's wrong.
But it doesn't affect your value. I mean, you can keep people from coming to town because of it, because you're not...
Right, right.
So, and actually, I think there's a lot of advantages to being unincorporated.
Basically, as I understand incorporation, and I've been studying it a little bit, we're a really small town. So usually, when unincorporation happens, it happens in a town that doesn't have enough members that, to, to fund, to fund a board. Like, hard to get five people. Five competent people that share like minds and wanna do the right things for the town. That's hard to do.
Right.
It's hard to get, you know, the clerk. We can't, we can't seem to get an outside clerk, because it's not worth their travel with no benefits to work here. You know, it's hard for us to get an attorney, because an attorney doesn't wanna be part of the circus.
Right, yes. They don't wanna, they don't wanna deal with all this.
These are the challenges right now the town is facing. So, I think, now, I can be corrected, because I'm hearing something different comes in, but if the town unincorporates, the town taxes go away. We already pay leading county taxes. So then all we would pay is leading county taxes.
We only pay a portion of leading county taxes.
So you're saying the town helps subsidize the county taxes?
Yes. And you are paying landfill taxes? Ambulance fee?
Okay.
Everything. Other than you're adding, you're actually...
A portion of county taxes now.
Adleorn taxes are what our rate is, not the county's rate, which is higher. You're at the rate that we were talking about at the budget meeting.
So there's some of that I don't understand.
Yes, there's some of that. That's it, that's it.
I got a house in the county. The taxes on here are three times higher than what the house is here.
The same house on the same...
Same value, same... I mean, it's all within a couple hundred dollars each way. The amount of taxes are the same.
But to answer other questions you may have, as far as the tax, I can't speak to that. But you would still get water service, because the county would take over the water. Lonnie also serves the other towns around, in English and, and Fowler Bluff, and he does our water, and I believe, I don't know if he does Bronson. I think he used to. So, they would have to just, they would just hire, Lonnie's paycheck would just change. He'd have a different boss.
So what do we have to do to get money brought in, into the town? It's kind of like, uh, we don't have like money...
We can discuss unincorporating town, we can actually try to do it. We're not gonna be allowed to do it. We don't qualify, disqualify, this town does not qualify for, to become unincorporated. We can't, we can't unincorporate it. There's so many...
Why?
Because the town, there's certain criterias you have to...
What I'm asking is, I've heard that Russell tried this before.
Right, and he found out that he can't do it.
Oh, okay.
Because we don't meet the criterias that make us eligible.
What would be the criteria that makes it eligible?
First of all, you have to be unincorporated.
Town would have to be broke.
Are we about that way? I'm sorry to be...
I don't think...
Are we about broke? I mean, that's, I mean, it's all, it's on social media. That's what I'm just asking, oh, you know, people wanna do, donate money, and they wanna do this because the town's so broke.
Well, we don't have, we don't have the budget all the other towns have.
Right, I understand that.
We have a budget portion to the amount of people that we have in the town.
Right.
So it's, it's in proportions, like all the other towns. It's just a smaller budget, 'cause it's a smaller town.
Right.
So, yeah, we don't have as much cushion or leeway that other towns have.
Okay. What do we need to do to bring money in? I mean, what, I mean, what...
What we're talking about doing is the taxes.
Okay, okay.
Making spare thoughts to board on the taxes.
Okay.
And that's something we'll be talking about on the upcoming, 'cause we gotta get all this stuff worked out between now and January, so that the county has all their legal time to do the proper...
Okay, so then something like, become unincorporated tomorrow or something?
You have to ask yourself, why do we become incorporated in the first place?
That's a good question.
Certainly, there was a reason for just a hundred residents.
Well, when it was incorporated, I'm sure they...
When it was incorporated, it was...
Twenty-five hundred, four thousand...
No, 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 no. Nineteen, no, no.
That's a question.
There were twenty, there were twenty, four thousand people. Let's move on to the next question.
Someone has to organize, operate the water plant, had, make the collections, see to the maintenance and everything. Probably the only reason that they, that they incorporated us was to maintain the water system. It wasn't to have a police force, uh, everything else that goes along with running a regular city.
Okay. And Mr. Fuller has something?
Yeah, Mr. Fuller.
This got into a full-blown discussion. I realize, realize you all just approved the agenda, and this is not an agendted item, nor was it advertised or whatever.
It just fell under the public comment.
And public comment, it goes one way, not both ways. So now, the question is, is it time for maybe a workshop on incorporation? Because then you're, then you're notifying the citizens, right now, some of the citizens may not be here, just because they didn't know this discussion was gonna come up, as opposed to public comment. Public comment always goes one way. It's not that the council shouldn't respond to it, but it always goes one way. But when you got, when you have an open discussion back and forth, and you're discussing issues, two things probably need to happen. Look at a workshop, and once you look at that workshop, then invite the people who are authorities, like there's a question about taxes. Are we, will you pay more or less taxes once you unincorporate? That's a question for the tax assessor. It's things like that, go ahead and get a professional to, someone who is competent to come in here and answer that, answer that question, and whatever other questions. For instance, do we qualify for unincorporation? That's a question, I think I know the answer, but I don't wanna give the answer in, in, in here, because I'm not necessarily the authority, but I have, I've dealt with that before. But the point being, it should be advertised as an open discussion about incorporation, so people in the town who are interested would be able to come in and express their opinions. Right now, the only opinions you're getting are the ones that saw the minutes, and saw the agenda, and thought that I'll either go to the meeting or not go to the meeting. So it should be an advertised workshop. You don't have to make decisions, but it should be an advertised workshop where at least, rather than just have it on social media, have it as an item that will be discussed with certain authorities here that are able to answer those questions. Thank you for your insight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
In the past, the town's always tried to make sure when open comments come up, that people somewhat get the answers that are required about. It's always been that practice of the town, it's always been that way. So it wasn't about a workshop. If the town was considering it, then I think a workshop would be in order. But I don't, at this time, I don't think it's been brought up as a consideration for the town.
Okay, did anybody else have any questions or comments? So in our old business, the first thing we're gonna talk about is the ethics. I just wanted to remind everybody that we have ethics training coming up on the 21st from one to five. There's also a reminder in the back of your packet somewhere. That'll be in Chief Lynn at the town hall. And if you've already taken your ethics class, you said you took yours in February.
I've done them, but yes.
Do you have that certificate, so you can give a copy to Belinda?
I don't have it, but it's, it's a sort of...
Where would Belinda get that?
Well, from, probably, whoever did the, the insert, it should be in the office, 'cause there was like five of us that went that, I think it was February, it was me, Russell, Mary, and two other people.
I don't buy any of the twenty-three...
Do you know what location you were in?
It has to be one in a physical year.
C F E C.
Office. You have to have one every year. You have to go to the ethics training, you know, like last year goes, applies to last year's time, this year's applies to this one.
No, I, I think it'd be a calendar year. Why wouldn't, you know?
A fiscal year.
From the time you took it. I should have taken this one in less than two years.
Okay. The next thing we had was the clerk position. We still have not filled that position. We did workshops. Some people showed up, some people did not. And the first round, as we knew, the person who was supposed to come for the interview never came, they canceled that interview, and then nobody went back through anything to choose anybody else. Belinda was hired for the bookkeeping, but there's still the other half of the clerk position, which would fill the administrative duties of the clerk position. Still needs to be done. So what's everyone's suggestion for what you wanna do to hire a clerk? 'Cause I tried to do a workshop and get people involved, and nobody showed up. So I'm throwing it back your way. What do you wanna do?
Well, why do we have to have two people in the office? I think one should suffice.
So you want Belinda to do everything in that position? You have to ask her about that.
Well, we all, we all voted and agreed, all right, just split it in two pieces. I don't think, I don't think that's the discussion at this time.
We didn't discuss it thoroughly enough to understand why we need to have two people.
Well, one of the reasons...
At this time, we voted on that.
One of the reasons that was decided before I came into this position, that y'all decided before me when you hired Angela and Norma, was to have a second person, so that people would know the job if somebody was out, if there was an emergency situation, besides the fact that you should have it split between the bookkeeping and the administrative.
That didn't come up until later.
But we did vote on that.
We did.
But it was understood at the time, those were both temporary positions.
Not, not Angela's, not in...
Well, I think if we...
I didn't see anything in it.
One was temporary.
Although Norma was, but Angela was going to get trained.
Either way, the question...
So in case Mary was sick or went on vacation or something.
The question at hand is, is does anyone wanna participate in following through with the rest of the resumes? Or is that something that just needs to be made out of the office that's here that's participating? That's the thing. Let's say, let's, let's, we put it out there that, that somebody who wants to come through these things is say what day we want to pick next week, so we can make it a legal workshop for everybody to come in and look through, and just go through them once again, and just try, just try to arrange for the second person. What days, I know that we're pretty busy next week.
Well, what's the reason to have two? I mean, the...
We've already, that's not the discussion.
Pardon?
That's not the discussion.
What are you discussing?
I stated...
The discussion, hiring the person that we've already voted on.
I already stated the other reasoning.
So, uh...
Well, I work the next three days, and next week, I'm booked up.
Yeah, next week's kind of a bad week.
Yeah, it is, there's a lot of things going on next week. Ethics change to one to five on Thursday?
Yeah, that's one of my booked up dates.
You gonna go to get to that?
I got that in my schedule.
Okay.
I got something Monday Tuesday, Thursday, and go back to work on Friday.
All right, so Monday following?
The Monday following, probably, yes. I have to look in the calendar, but my calendar's out in the car.
All right, we're thinking, let's look at the calendar, so we can see what date that is. We're talking Monday, the 25th?
Well, how about everybody check their calendars, and if you've got something going on that day and it's no good, let me know, and then we can discuss another date. It'll be enough notice to post it anyway. Okay. So if anybody has a conflict with the 25th, let me know, and we'll discuss another date and get that posted. Sound good?
Do you want to call?
It sounds good to me, yeah.
To discuss and go back to the, at the...
Or workshop.
Yeah, to go back through the...
Resumes.
Resumes, to pick someone to interview. 'Cause somebody needs to be hired for that, because it would appear, from the different things I'm hearing, that everybody seems to have a problem with me doing the different clerk stuff. And I certainly didn't expect it to go on this long. I was trying to temporarily help out. But everybody seems to have a problem.
Well, you have done a good job.
I tried to do the best I can.
You did a real good job, uh...
No.
I do have other things to do as well, so I didn't mean that to be my focus of anything. I would love to have a clerk in here doing the things.
All right, so 25th it is, unless we hear something back for the question, change the date.
Sounds good.
And by tomorrow, we'll know? Tomorrow, we do know? By the 25th?
Yeah, 25th, yeah, as soon as I go to my car.
Okay. All right. Well, maybe before we get out of the meeting here, now, we can finalize it before we go.
Yeah, I can go get my phone.
Well, this is...
Darling, go get it.
Thank you, Darling.
Thank you. I take care about five, six people in total, full time. Or back up.
Yeah, it's important to check that calendar. It's easy to overbook. All right, so you want to wait on that or move on to the new business? Did y'all look through, um, the quotes for the air conditioning repair that needs to be done? There's three quotes. So we need to make a decision on who we want to go with. You have spans.
Those aren't repaired, it's just that replacement.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what needs to be done.
Updating.
They've band-aided it for years. Was there three or two?
There's three there. There's three. Work that Gator's workshop for things.
Okay.
Ten, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars. This is so strange. Was this, was this system condemned or was it, uh?
It's, they're, they keep having to repair it. We discussed this at a previous meeting. And you actually made the motion for us to seek replacement.
Replacement?
Right, so that's what we're gonna be, we're trying to partially replace it. And you said, let's go. Yes, you did.
Boy, that's a bold statement.
So now we're.
You're being bold.
Handballed.
Span heating and air comes in, their, their thing is, uh, nine thousand eight hundred fifty dollars.
You said twelve.
All seasons come in at ten thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. The additional money for insulation, which I think there's some things we need to do before you consider insulation. But it does need to be insulated. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't have to make it seem to be up.
Yeah, that mid-Florida one looks weird. That's why I was asking if there was a third one. Because it just looks weird.
Oh, yeah, okay. Mid-Florida's eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-seven. So span, which is also the ones we've always used in the past, their number is considerably less than all of them.
Not including insulation.
Right, insulation, only the one guy put the insulation on, I guess it's something they do insulation as well. But there's some things that need to be done and be added. Can repair the ceiling before we try to insulate it. So we don't waste the money on insulation. But then it fall out of the ceiling when we're trying to repair the ceiling.
Yeah, so it looks like span is the cheaper one and that's who y'all always have gone with as well.
We make a motion, we hire tax ban. He's, he's serviced this system for years.
Yep.
And he's, he would come when you called him.
I'll, I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Unanimous? All right, we'll have Mr. Span come out. Fix that.
He didn't give us any downtime in the building, did he?
Um, uh, when, I guess we're calling those days, drop the bid and we'll see what his schedule is and try to make sure we fix it within a day. Maybe two, maybe a week. We ain't nobody here. This shouldn't take them long. It's, duct works, most of the duct work stands like it is. They're just modifying a few pieces to update some of the duct work and changing out the units.
Worst case scenario, I have a portable air conditioner we can bring in so we can be up and running anyway, so.
I don't know about you, but the twenty-fifth.
Awesome.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do the clerk position workshop Monday, the twenty-fifth at ten a.m. I'll hang a notice about that tomorrow. And the other thing we had was a new computer system. And there's some quotes from Gator Works Computing about that.
The twenty-fifth of September or October?
September.
September.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What did you say?
Twenty-fifth of, of this month, I'm gonna be away.
You're gonna be away?
I said you wanted to do that.
Do you want us to reschedule that or something?
Well, um, what are we doing? Just going through, uh.
Just go through to pick someone to interview.
I, I think that you're capable of adding it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Well, y'all have to explain some things. Oh, remember that.
Right now, we're having trouble with the desktop that has absolutely all our information. And we keep having problems moving it up when you cut the power off. So we, we've managed to move all of the data to a, a, a portable hard drive. The thing is, if that portable hard drive gets dropped, we are screwed. That has all of our book books, that has all our documents, that has just a lot of information. So we're gonna, we're talking about getting a new hard drive, but we're going to do a server where not only the clerk will, or, uh, will have the laptop, she can a, access the data on the server. As I do my bookkeeping at the same time, my data will be stored on the server and then it will be uploaded offsite. So if we were actually hit with a hurricane and we had to redo our data, it's safely somewhere else other than in this building. And that way, if, we can also take the, um, the data that we retrieved from all of those back, uh, old computers, we can also put that on there as well. So we have a lot of the data that we need to preserve.
Okay, uh, so this is from Gator?
This is from Gator.
And, uh, these specifications, who, who gave them the specifications?
We told them what we, what we needed and then they gave us what they did and then there, then it will to up, to update or to maintain our server and give us, and also answer any problems that we have.
Well, if we had an IT person.
They're good at eighty-seven, nineteen.
Explain what we had. This, what he gave us here is overkill. This thing will run Tampa almost.
Okay, so what do you want to do? I'm, I'm offering for suggestions. I'm just saying, if we don't.
I think for like three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars a month for, uh, for maintenance.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's eighty-seven, nineteen a month for the maintenance. But to get the new system.
It's a thousand, it's a thousand dollars a year, probably more. But at any rate, this is so much, so overkill. I, I went through and checked a lot of prices on everything that he had quoted us. And quite, I got the numbers, but.
I don't, no, we need the numbers. I mean, I, I know Gator Works, it's like span. If we go down, someone's coming to me right away. They've already proved it.
I can understand.
So I know.
Well, he'd always come for, why do we have to spend three thousand dollars to get this stuff whenever, uh, we already get it for a thousand, at least a thousand dollars less?
Please tell me where you got your quote so I can tell him what the system and he can look at.
Have a system that's adequate for, for our town.
Yes, there are. There in.
I mean, if, you know, if it's a gammer or something, well, we need, the system needs to be more than we need.
Otherwise, so it has room to work and things is gonna happen.
Just check that out when you go home and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about.
I make a question. We go with Gator Works.
Okay, I have a motion that we are going with the computer system and maintenance from Gator Works.
Well, you're supposed to have, uh, three, you're supposed to have three estimates. We get one estimate from somebody. I think we should, I think we should get a proper amount of, uh, of bids on this. This can't go get a first person that comes along, especially with the numbers that he gave us. We need something to compare.
I think the timeframe is the more the crunch.
You keep coming up with this, everything's an emergency, everything's an emergency, everything's.